Good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham? Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for today. We thank you for the opportunity of life, health, and strength. We thank you for the opportunity to serve as public servants, and we ask for your wisdom and your knowledge. Your word declares that you will instruct us and teach us the way that we should go. And so, we thank you now for what you have done, for what you're doing, and what you're going to do. We ask your continual blessings upon our mayor, upon our city council, upon all that worked for the city, and upon this city at large, Lord God. We thank you for what you are about to do. We have your faith to call those things that be not as though they were. We pray this prayer in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on February 13th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February 9th through the 15th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is proclamations and commendations. I don't believe the mayor has any of those today, but we do have a special guest I'd like to recognize. This is County Commissioner Craig Enser is here with us today. Commissioner, come on, please, to the podium and...
State my address.
State your name and address. We need to scan your retina.
That'd be fine. No, I came here today. I just left the county commission meeting, and I was on my way home, and I figured that I would come by. And I made an announcement today at the county commission meeting along with others is that as Representative District Six in the City of Gadsden, in my district, I just wanted to say thank you all for what you're doing on the Grow Tonight and the Master Plan. We work, obviously, with Goobin Mills K Wood. I know y'all have extensively on this master plan, and it's just, I think it's a great thing, and I just wanted to come and say to the public, please come tonight at 5:00. Listen to what the master plan has to say and what the engineers and all the things that have gone in with Goobin Mills K Wood to try to bring our city, you know, to a new light and to bring new ideas to the city on all aspects. And then also, one other thing I want to say is Thursday night, I think, is another big deal that I wanted to say as far as the county commission that I'm pressing on, obviously, it's not my district, but the airport. There's a lot of big things that are going on in this city, and a lot of people that are coming to our city and our county through the airport, and a lot of times when they step off that airplane, it's the first step into our city. And so, I want to commend y'all on what you're doing at the airport, and I want to say as the county commissioner, as representative of city, on the county level is that I'm in support and want to help y'all in any way possible with the airport and the Grow, and recommend that the city and all the residents come and be a part and feel what's going on and understand what's going on and understand that each piece of this pile, it all comes together in some shape, form, or fashion. So, we've had some things going on that people have been coming in to the county and to the city and with economic development, and I'd like to see the airport have some, a little bit of a facelift and maybe some new hangers, and the FBO could have a facelift as well. But there are some big things going on, and just want to say thank y'all for your support. And if there's anything that we can do on the county level, please let us know, and thank you for what you're doing.
Well, appreciate you being here today. Thanks for the support, and I love the way that the county and the city's working together cohesively along with our legislative delegation to make things happen. I know there's some good things that'll be forthcoming here pretty soon all over the county, so appreciate all your work and helping bring that to fruition.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you. All right, move to item eight. It's unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Bass Tactics. This is for sponsorship of a fishing tournament to be held at Gadsden Couso Landing on May 3rd and 4th, 2024, and the amount is $6,000 or $35 per vote. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution granting easement to Alabama Power Company. This is to provide service to electric vehicle charging stations approved for installation at the venue. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 comes under the first reading. This is an ordinance authorizing creation of Gadsden Emergency Communication District and Territory. This ordinance would establish a separate emergency communications district for the City of Gadsden. The ordinance was amended slightly, and I believe that we need a motion to substitute the updated ordinance, which would be noted as 2024-151.1. Is that, did you have point one, or does Councilman Smith have point one? I'm sorry. Okay, so the one that's, so the one we're looking for now is 151.1 up at the top left of the...
The first one should be Steve.
Yeah, I think it's you, Councilman Smith. I think you have a 151.1.
All right, Mr. President. I look at most of Mrs. Miller's on item 151, the Area Ethnic Communication District Creation and Territory.
All right, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, this motion is for unanimous consent to consider today.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Unanimous consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
You have two abstentions.
I believe we would need a motion to substitute point one unless you wish to adopt the ordinance as it was originally drafted.
Yeah, we need to substitute. We need to have a motion to substitute.
Okay, so I make a motion to substitute point one, and basically, the lawyers have just added some things to it.
I'm so sorry. I want to make a motion to, that for point one, and basically, the lawyers have looked at it and have just done some wording or made some changes to fit state statutes, so I make a motion for point one.
All right, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute 2024/151.1 for the original ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the substitution.
Motion to adopt.
All right, there's a motion to adopt.
Was there a second?
Is there a second?
Okay. Those in favor of adopting the ordinance as substituted, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
One abstention.
So, you're abstaining?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Move to item 12. It's a resolution appointing members to Gadsden Emergency Communications District. This resolution was also amended, and I believe we need a motion to substitute the updated resolution, which is 2024/150.1.
So moved. Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute the point one resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the substitution.
All right, the substituted resolution appoints Bobby Jackson, Vance Brown, Derek Mumert, Steve Smith, Ruth Moffett, Shane Ellison, and Eric Smith. Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution as substituted, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Abstain.
I did not record you as an abstention on the previous ordinance, did you?
It should have been. I apologize.
Did you intend...
When I abstained initially for the unanimous consent, I thought it would just carry through the proceedings, but yeah, it should be listed as an abstention on each one of those.
On all votes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Concerned both of these two, the resolution and the ordinance.
Thank you, okay. Motion carries to adopt the resolution with two abstentions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item 13 is new business. I believe we have quite a few today.
Councilman Smith, you want to start with yours? The 2024-164, the supplemental payment agreement for L.D.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Wilson. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules today and adopt the resolution authorizing supplemental payment agreement to L.D. Budgeted for the amount of $1,433.
Second.
Sorry, Mr. President, I am trying to find that resolution in my stack. I found it. All righty. Those in favor to suspend the rules and consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, I have a stack full here, so y'all bear with me. The first one is a resolution awarding bid number 3537 for 15 2024 Chevy Tahoe vehicles for the Gadsden Police Department totaling $740,625. Those of you might remember, several weeks ago, we discussed and debated and took action on a resolution to transfer, I think it was about $2.4 million, right around, to cover several different items from our unassigned fund balance over into several different departments, and this was one of the things included in that. So, this isn't an additional $740,000. This is included in that $2.4 million. This is just the actual bid to get the vehicles on the way. And again, this is 15 brand-new 2024 Chevy Tahoe vehicles for our police officers, and this will bring the total number of new vehicles that this body has approved to 44, I believe, 44 new police vehicles since this body was elected. So, we are certainly putting an emphasis on upgrading our police vehicles in the City of Gadsden. So, with that in mind, and given the unique issues with logistics and supply chain these days with new vehicles, specifically, police vehicles, I'd like to ask us to suspend the rules and consider this under new business so we can get these things on the way.
Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to suspend the rules and allow this item for new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, my next one, and I think citizens will probably agree that this is a pretty important one, too. The company that we have worked with in the past to provide our phone service here at City Hall and several other departments no longer has the capability to provide a certain level of switchboard service that we currently use, and so, we have now reached out to another provider, Ring Central. So, this will be a contract, a 36-month contract totaling $6,663 a month to provide a total of 273 telephone lines for the city's day-to-day operation, and given that that interruption would be pretty substantial, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business, please.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, Mr. President, the next one is a resolution authorizing an agreement with CDG Inc. concerning sidewalk improvement project along Sixth Street, Seventh Street, Chestnut Street, and Walnut Street. It's my understanding, again, we have discussed this project several times over the last few months, but this will be improvements to the sidewalk infrastructure, as stated, between Chestnut and Walnut and Sixth and Seventh Street, essentially, all over there, trying to extend the streetscape and improve the sidewalks over off of Broad Street back towards where Johnson's is. So, you've got Sixth and Seventh there, and then over to Chestnut and Walnut, so you've got the post office there, and several banks, and several doctor's offices, and what we've seen is a lot of elderly people use those sidewalks pretty frequently to get to and from their homes or places of residences downtown to places like the bank and the doctor's office and the post office, and of course, the grocery store at Johnson's. So, this is a big project. It's been in the works for a long time, so if everyone's in agreement, this is a total amount with CDG of $148,543. So, if it's okay with my colleagues, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business as well.
All right, we have a second, Councilman Avery. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I apologize, guys, I'm working through these. Oh, I'm sorry, move to adopt.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, the next one is continuation of a project that I'm sure has impacted a lot of people, certainly in my district and District Five, but I think throughout the city, probably these days, as much traffic as it has. But this is a resolution authorizing an amendment to our agreement with CDG Inc. concerning the resurfaces, or excuse me, the resurfacing and partial realignment of South 11th Street. The total amount of this is $5,470. This is just the amount required so that CDG can provide the required documentation to the Army Corps of Engineers for the project. Essentially, you guys know, about five years ago, we resurfaced South 11th Street from essentially Meagan almost all the way just to Randall Street, right before you go down the hill towards the nature preserve there on South 11th. And then, of course, our next phase was to redo the intersection of South 11th and Steel Station Road there at the high school with some new turn lanes, several rerouting of the way that traffic flows through that intersection. And then, the most recent project that we've completed would be the paving and the additional addition of an eight-foot-wide ADA-compliant sidewalk from the high school all the way up to essentially Tabernacle, right there at the nature preserve. So, we've been taking this in chunks. We've got another project that's in the pipeline now that will resurface and widen Steel Station Road, essentially coming from the airport all the way into the high school where it terminates there at South 11th Street. So, the only thing left is one section of South 11th Street, really, on the northern end, that goes from essentially Tabernacle Church up the hill to Randall Street. And what we've done is, several years ago, the city acquired a piece of property right there in that real awkward turn as you come down the hill. It's a blind turn, probably not the safest, and we, our goal is really to complete those sidewalks so that our residents of downtown Gadsden who have students that are attending Gadsden High School could walk safely on a sidewalk all the way from their homes and their communities, all the way to the high school and back, or ride a bicycle, or whatever. So, in order to do that, we've got to complete this one last section that goes essentially from Tabernacle up to Randall Street, and that's going to include us changing the route of the road slightly, so it's not quite as steep and dramatic of a turn, a blind turn there. It'll kind of straighten it out a little bit, and again, it'll continue this eight-foot-wide sidewalk that we've already installed on the other section of South 11th Street. So, this $5,400 is just the funds needed for our engineering group that we contracted with to send all the documents over to the Army Corps of Engineers so that they can sign off on the rerouting of the road. So, again, to keep this project moving, I would ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and let us consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, if there's no objections to this, and Madam Clerk, if there's no procedural issues with this, I would like to consider the following five resolutions in one action. Okay? Everybody okay with that? Okay, so, the following five resolutions are contracts with different performance artists for the upcoming summer concert series, as well as the Parrot Head Party at the amphitheater that will be hosted later on this year. So, I'll read through these contracts. It's four different acts, I think, total, or five different acts, excuse me, beginning with, let's see, this is for the May Bash. This is $2,500 for Erica Sunshine Lee to perform at the amphitheater on May the 11th as part of the May Bash Parrot Head Party. I believe Ms. Lee is a resident of Key West. She's a performer that performs a lot of Jimmy Buffett-style music, and it'll feed into that concept. The next one is $2,500, also for the May Bash, for the artist Keith Burns to perform at the amphitheater on May 11th. Again, similar style music, kind of a Key West, Jimmy Buffett-themed experience there for the Parrot Head Party. The next one is $3,800 for an agreement for the summer concert series with a band called Fuego Band. They are primarily a Motown performance act that has a 10-piece band with jazz and horns and strings, and so, anyway, that'll be on Friday, June the 7th. The next one would be also another band to perform, $6,000 for Nash County to perform as part of the summer concert series, which would be July the 5th, 2024. Again, I think they are primarily country music artists. Then, finally, we have $6,700 for Rubik's Groove, which is a band to perform on Friday, August the 2nd, excuse me, as part of the summer concert series, and they are more of a performance band. They dress up, they've got a big wild show, it's a lot of fun. But anyway, with that in mind, all of these are part of our upcoming live performances at the amphitheater, and as anybody knows who has worked in music, you have to book these guys as well in advance as you can. So, to make sure that we're able to lock in these performances, I would ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and consider these contracts under new business.
Second.
A second. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to consider all five resolutions as items of new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted for all five.
And just as a footnote, all five of those performers, the collective total paid out is approximately $21,500 for all five of those performers. So, with that in mind, I'd move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all five resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five.
That is all I have, Mr. President.
Drink some water there, that'll be good. Are there any others? Have we got them all done? All right. I do want to point out that on the summer concert series, this was discussed in the pre-council meeting, Janet Terrence, who's in charge of that, is, if you go to those, you'll notice there's a lot of corporate sponsorships, and so, the cost is basically covered. We're putting that money out initially, but the cost is essentially covered by the corporate sponsorships, just like the ice skating rink that we had during Christmas and things. So, all the entertainment-type things are, it's kind of a public-private partnership. The city provides the amphitheater, but there's a lot of private participation that makes this possible, so it's not just taxpayer money going to pay for the entertainment. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. All right, so now, that's all of new business. We'll go to department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any of those today? Seeing none, we'll move to item 15, citizen request to speak. First speaking today is Randy Odom, and Mr. Odom is asked to speak about road conditions in Gadsden. Welcome, Mr. Odom, if you will, sir, if you'll give us your name and your address.
I'm Randy Odom. I live at 213 Murray Drive in District One.
Yes, sir.
I understand some of the things that we're doing here, like the mayor cleaning up the water and all this stuff. I really appreciate that, and it really looks good, but things like that probably should be done if you have surplus funds. It don't matter if it's $2. You know, you're spending money when it should be spent somewhere else. We have roads in District One that you can't even travel on. They're impassable. I have a flooding problem behind my house that can't get nothing done about it, but we can spend money on state roadway, on state highway that's supposed to bring us money down the road. I just don't understand, and I would really, really appreciate it if somebody would explain that to me.
So, you want that to be explained now, or, I mean, probably the best thing would be...
Well, I've been trying to get it explained to me for a year and a half, and it hadn't happened, so, you know, I just don't understand why we can fill our fantasies, but we can't fill what we need to do.
All right, well, this, the purpose of public address to the council is for you to state your issues or problems, and it's really not a place for the back and forth, but I'm sure we'd be glad to meet with you, the administration would, if we could make an appointment with you.
Well, you know, I've been here one time before, and I was belittled so bad, I started not to come back, but I did. But, you know, things needs to be spent in respective. You know, the runoff floodwater in the city limits is the city's problem. It's their responsibility.
That's right. All right, I will, Mayor's not here, but Chief of Staff Brett, maybe we need to arrange a meeting with Mr. Odom to discuss his concerns. arrange a meeting with Mr. Odom to discuss his concerns. If that would, if we, I think we have your contact information right, Ms. Nelson? Okay. I would request that the mayor's office get in touch with you to discuss your concerns, Mr. Odom.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming today. All right, the next citizen request to speak is Mary Blankenship. Ms. Blankenship is asked to speak about streets, railroad crossings, burned houses, and needed improvements in East Gadsden.
This is a lecture I got. It says "Staff Only," and that's the lecture they gave me last week. So, this is staff-only, so you can hear me.
Ms. Blankenship, if you'll come to the podium, so it'll be on the microphone, and pull the microphone down a little bit, maybe, that'll, that way.
You can hear me without the microphone. I guarantee it.
All right, you can state your name and your address, please.
Mary Nichols Blankenship, 401 Harpum Street, East Gadsden, Alabama. The pictures you have are the burn of the fire that I turned in four times now. It's been over a year. And it's going to be done, something's going to be torn down. Excuse me, kids play, they file in, you get sued. That's legal. Now, the others are the roads. Go down East Broad, you got potholes, you got cracks, you don't have room. All right, you got, it's supposed to turn, 18 Weather is supposed to turn from coming over the bridge, take a left onto Sixth Street, and go back to Meegan, not go all the way down East Broad. Also, on there, you should also note, that needs to be redone. Where your railroad tracks are, you got holes, and you got holes. Thank you, I've already had one flat tire with it. And the next one, I'll be filing federal charges. And I'll, and this is representative, I don't know what y'all do, or if you are even in office, or if you even come, or if you even care about the city. Because two-thirds of the time, you're not here. I don't know what you're getting paid for, except for sitting here while you're here at this time. Or either speaking with each other over, or texting each other. Well, guess what? Not everybody texts. So, why can't you do it legally and logically? Now, you can't do it right, we'll go to Montgomery. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. All right, item 16 is remarks by mayor and council. The mayor's stepped out, so Brett, do you have something? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick announcement to follow up on Commissioner Enzer earlier. Tonight, we have our Grow Gadsden meeting at the venue. We want to invite the community. Thirteen-plus months of work have gone into this. Thank you to the council for everything y'all have done to contribute and make sure people's voices are included. Tonight's part of that, so that meeting's at 5:00, and the mayor will be leading the presentation, so it's always entertaining when he takes the stage. And then, I want to mention, the Planning Commission will meet tomorrow afternoon in a work session at 3:00 to go over the finer points of the plan, and then are scheduled to take a vote at their regular meeting at 4:00. By statute, the Planning Commission is actually the entity responsible for updating and maintaining a master plan for the city. So, their vote tomorrow will quote-unquote "make it official" if they do so. And then, you all, as the city council, will have an opportunity over the next couple of weeks to potentially endorse that plan. So, this will be the third master plan in the city's history. We had one in 1949, it was the first one ever. We're currently operating off of one that was passed in 1977 when Jimmy Carter was president. So, it's exciting to see we're on the heels of finally updating it and looking toward the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Appreciate that. All right, let's, we'll start with Councilman Robinson in District Seven.
I have nothing today, sir.
Nothing, thank you, sir. Councilwoman Monatra?
Well, I'll just share that a week from this coming Friday, at Nakalittle Falls Park at the pavilion, will be a tree giveaway. So, for those that are interested, it's an opportunity to plant trees.
Are they money trees?
Thank you.
Can I? I appreciate you bringing that up. I apologize for not doing that, but I did post that on my social media and on all the neighborhood pages up on Nakalittle Mountain in District Seven. So, yes, come out to the tree giveaway where you can replant a tree from, are those trees, I've always, I need to ask Christine, are those trees coming from, like, Nakalittle Falls, like, out of the gorges, and they get repotted, and they get to go?
The Alabama Forestry Commission.
Still, good cause, good idea. They've been doing it for years, it's awesome.
That is good, thank you. I believe those are actually clippings from the oak trees at Tummer's Corner, if I'm not mistaken. All right, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Lath, excuse me, Monatra, is that the end of yours? Your comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Wilson?
I just want to say two things, obviously, before something really serious, but number one, I think everybody remembers, when we got our ARP fund several years ago, those 24-something million dollars, over, I think, $16 million of that was devoted to drainage and water runoff projects all throughout all seven districts of Gadsden. And our engineer told us at that time, when we allocated that much money, that he could have $110 million, and it wouldn't be enough to fix all of the drainage and infrastructure issues that not just Gadsden, but every city in America is dealing with. So, I can tell you that we're working hard to address those drainage and rain issues. Also, I think it's important for individuals to understand that some, believe it or not, we do not have the ultimate flexibility to spend the entire city budget, however we want to spend it, a lot. In fact, the overwhelming majority of the funding that the city receives is quote-unquote earmarked or restricted, meaning we can only spend it on certain things at certain times. We can't just move money from one pot into another. So, that can create some challenges sometimes, and I just ask that citizens keep that in mind when they see something like that happening. It's not necessarily a foregone conclusion that if we're spending money on one project, that we could be spending it on another project, because that's rarely the case. If we're spending money on a project, it's usually because that money is earmarked and has to be spent on that certain project. So, please keep that in mind. Also, I was very happy to see, as you noticed today, one of the actions we took was finalizing our relationship with OmniTrax, the railroad company who oversees the crossing on Sixth Street and Meegan, as was addressed in today's council meeting. That has been a long process that's still ongoing, but has been very impactful, I think, on the Meegan Boulevard roadway, as far as fixing that big railroad, and I'm sure you'll continue to see those improvements stretch out beyond the Meegan intersection there. Finally, I just want to give my condolences to Ms. Becky Thompson, her son Dantley, and wife Kristy Thompson, and their children Lexi and Luke, and my dear friend Tripp Collins and his wife Summer Thompson Collins, and their children Jade and Asher May, on the passing of Rodney Thompson. He passed away February the 17th. Not only was Rodney the father of one of my dear friends growing up, Summer and I went to school together for many, many years. She was my date to my very first Christmas coronation dance, and I remember, and you cannot imagine, not only was he the father of my friend Summer, but he was my high school principal at Southside High School. So, you can imagine, as a freshman, taking the principal's daughter to your first dance, it was a pretty intimidating meeting in his office, in the principal's office prior to that. But he was such a special person. He was a coach, he was a principal, he was a teacher, and he was just different. You know, this was back in a different time, pre-9/11, you know, where the good old boys during the winter showed up with their rifles still in the back of their truck windows, you know, coming straight from the field. This was before mass school shootings, and, you know, there was, it was just a different energy. I mean, I remember when I was a freshman, the senior high school kids could smoke with the teachers during break. It was just a different world. But Rodney was, Mr. Thompson was such an incredible leader. Not only was he fun and riding, you know, drive his four-wheeler down the hallways of pep rallies, you know, but he was so compassionate towards the people that needed it. You know, he didn't spend a lot of time talking to the AP kids. He didn't spend a lot of times talking to the academics, academically-successful kids. He spent most of his time talking to the people who needed it the most, the people that didn't have a great home environment, the people that weren't performing well in school. Those were the people he was drawn to, those were the students he was drawn to, those are the ones you would see him spending his time with at any given day. And I remember, you know, him opening up all the soda machines and the snack machines at breaks, saying, "Man, you kids have just been working too hard. Y'all need to take a break. Everybody come out of your classrooms and just come get you a coda and get you a bag of chips, and let's hang out and talk." You know, he was just such a special leader. And then, of course, Mr. Thompson went on after his retirement to take over several of the transportation responsibilities for the Edgewall County School System, and eventually, he came to work as an employee of the city of Gadsden in the Transportation Department. He just loved meeting people and being with people, and he never met a stranger in his life, and he was such a strong figure in my life. And so, I hate to see him go. He had been struggling with some physical neurological issues related to some growth that he had in his brain, and so, he had been in hospice care for the last couple of months, but he passed away peacefully on the 17th, surrounded by his friends and family. So, my condolences again to Dantley and Kristy and Tripp and Summer Collins and Ms. Becky and the entire Thompson family on the loss of a giant in our community. So, thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. He truly was a great guy. Rodney was a friend of mine. That's very well said, thank you. Councilman Avery?
Yeah, Mr. President. Want to give a couple of announcements here. Loving the Culture presents Culture Talks with Lamaya Ben Youssef, and I probably screwed that name up, PhD author and associate professor in Arabic Studies, Birmingham Southern College. Will be at the Mary G. Harden Center for Cultural Arts on the 27th at 4:00 PM. That's 501 Broad Street. Another announcement would be Head Start Black History Program, February 22nd, 9:30 to 10:45 at the Atala location, 404 North Ninth, I mean, 404 Ninth Avenue in Atala, Alabama. February the 24th, Black History Celebration at Mission Baptist Church, led by Mr. Jamie Windborn. The topic is faith, hope, and love, and then that address at Mission is 1115 Tuscaloosa Avenue. That program will begin for 30:00 PM to 6:30. There's some guest speakers and entertainment and so on for that piece as well. Carver Community Revitalization Committee presents its Black History Program on the 25th at 4:00 PM at First Baptist Church in Alabama City, and that's 101 North 29th Street, and they too have a guest speaker along with acts, et cetera. On the condolence part, there are so many, so much that has been going on in the city, around, of course, our country, but as it relates, they hit different when they hit home. I want to mention one lady who was always full of joy, laughter, I don't think she met a stranger, 30 years of age, three children, and a mate, just full of energy, a unique person. Her life was taken in a horrific accident, and she passed a few days ago. Ms. Danisha Williams, want to send condolences to her family, those close friends of hers as we prepare to celebrate her life. And there's been a piece been put on social media as it relates to aiding the family for her care, as relates to her service. So, Wes Gadsden Funeral Home is the provider of her celebration, and you can reach them at 256-549-0004, as it in the sense of giving any donations or contribution as relates to this tragedy and aiding this family, especially these three young, these three young children who has lost their mother. On that point, the city of Gadsden, as it relates to the city of Gadsden, City Hall, the city of Gadsden as a whole has also lost a true icon in the city by the name of Ms. Clarice Robertson. Ms. Clarice Robertson was 30 years with Human Resource. She was a fellow community, served on many boards here in the city of Gadsden, and so, to Mr. Paul, Ms. Palet, we send condolences to you and your family in the loss of Ms. Robertson, a very good, a very good woman. And ending on the condolences, I would say that earth has no sorrow, that heaven can't heal. So, continue to pray and to look to God for your source of strength. I am a living witness and proof that he will heal and that a comforting spirit will come upon you. Final, District Three Community Meeting will be February the 27th at Mount Pilgrim, Missionary Baptist Church on North Ninth Street, and that will begin at 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Again, that's District Three Community Meeting, February the 27th at Mount Pilgrim on North Ninth Street. 6:00 PM start, we will wrap up at 7:30 promptly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we send our condolences as well to the Robertson family and all of the grieving families, just know that we're praying for you. It's just a sad dog that won't wag his own tail. Man, I love the city of Gadsden. This is where we live and dwell and make our livelihood. A lot of great things are happening around the city. It's always refreshing to go and play in the marketplace like Walmart, and people talking about how things are looking. So, we want to give a shout-out to all the department heads that do what you do. We appreciate the mayor and his leadership. Want to thank them also for coming out to the town hall meeting we had on last week. John and Joseph, we really appreciate that. Another thing, two weeks ago, the mayor was talking about the Grow Gadsden campaign and mentioning people who were coming back into our city. He highlighted a few people, like Pastor Smith sitting out there today, moving back here from Mississippi. I got a call yesterday from a young lady, Kathy Marana, thought she'd be here today, who's moving back from Doughton, from those beautiful waters close to Florida, moving back into District One. So, I get excited when I hear people who've been gone for decades moving back into the city of Gadsden. Regardless of what you think, it means that something is going on good in the city. So, I'm excited to be a part of what God is doing right now. So, good to see Commissioner Enzer, as always. We're grateful for our relationship with the county, and we look forward to all that's coming in the near future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Lathan?
Thank you, President Beck. I want to just make an announcement. Gadsden Public Library and the Mary G. Harden Center for Cultural Arts present Dwight Cameron's documentary, Tucson, the Opponent. Tucson, the Opponent is a portrait of Alabama artist and native Willie Tucson Coleman, whose work embodies a deep connection to his spirituality, created by Emmy Award winner, independent documentary filmmaker Dwight Cameron, he's my uncle. The exclusive viewing, it's public premiere. It is scheduled for February the 29th, meet and greet at 5:30, screening promptly at 6:00 PM, and we encourage all to take part in it. We know both are natives of Gadsden, Alabama, so that's on February the 29th at 5:30, and then the screening promptly at 6:00 PM. This is at Cultural Arts Center, Cultural Arts Center. I just want to say, it has been said several times about the unveiling tonight for the comprehensive plan. Again, I want to encourage the city of Gadsden to be there, but I also want to encourage District One to be there. I know when we, the meeting was scheduled at the Community Center for Districts One and Two, you really showed, came out for that and expressed your concerns and the things that you wanted to see happen in this city. It is being unveiled tonight at 5:00, so I encourage you to be present. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Ford?
Thank you. Sorry, I had to excuse myself. There's good things, like Pastor... Councilman Smith was saying, we just met with two more developers looking to come to Gadsden, and there's a third one coming in at 1:00. So, things are hopping. I'm telling you, things are moving fast, and it's hard to keep up. So, I want to thank our team up in the office for how we all spread out and we're going to all the meetings and the employees for all what they do. We're going to DC with the council for the National League of Cities to ask for several line item appropriations. Keep in mind, this year, we still have Congressman Mike Rogers and Congressman Adir Hope. So, you have two powerful House members that are going to represent Gadsden all in one year. Last year, we got $13 million in projects. So, we're hoping to have that much more this year. We're going to visit Knockalittle Falls today. They are fully open, and the new train is rolling. So, please take everybody up there and go visit the falls. And don't forget, mini golf and the season passes are now for sale, especially since the weather's gotten a little bit better. So, I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank the council for what they did today in the council meeting, because I was here pre-council. So, I'm assuming everything passed. Is that right, Mr. President?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. So, thank you all for what you're doing. But things are moving so fast, it's hard to keep up sometimes. But man, I'm telling you, it's a great day to be in here in the city of Gadsden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilman Avery had one more that he wanted to...
I've been doing it, so I want to keep it up here. In lieu of black history, I want to say, this young lady was named the dean of Lurleen B. Wallace College of Nursing in 1983. She remained in the role for over 20 years. Her career started at JSU in 1969 as an assistant professor, becoming the first African-American faculty member. Not only was she the first at JSU, was the first African-American to serve as dean of nursing at a predominantly white university in the state of Alabama. She was inducted in the Alabama Nursing Hall of Fame at Alabama in 2009, per their bio. She has held numerous gubernatorial gubernational appointments. Her vision results in the implementation of the first nursing clinic in an Alabama college school of nursing and established community health centers focused on eliminating health disparities in North Alabama. In Gadsden, there is a facility after her name in her honor and recognition of her commitment to her community. She established the Lamp Lighter Award while serving as president of the Alabama League of Nursing. The award recognized Alabama nurses that have made significant professional contributions. A member of Apocappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, she served as... At that time, served as the Lambda Phi advisor during the tenure at JSU. Today, I take the opportunity and the honor to give education, a small tidbit of education on Ms. Dr. Roberta Watts of Gadsden, Alabama.
Thank you, Councilman Avery.
All right, let's wind things up here. Commissioner Enzer, thank you for being here today, taking time out of your schedule to come and be with us. Appreciate your kind words, and I echo the comments that have already been made. We do look forward to continued work with the county and the county commission on just making our city and county just as great as it can be. And I think we're off to a great start, and it's good to have you here. You're welcome anytime. And y'all may remember, I think, last week or the week before, we had a beautiful rainbow here to recognize them for their seventh anniversary. And Candido is a student in that program, and he sang the National Anthem, and he had a job interview at Publix. Well, Candido got in touch with me Monday and wanted me to announce that he got the job at Publix.
Right.
And he was very proud of himself, and well, he should be. So, chalk that up for Publix. They just got a great employee. So, if you go to Publix, look for Candido. He's probably going to be the most popular guy there. So, just keep your eyes open for that. And I appreciate Councilwoman Latham bringing up Dwight Cameron. Your uncle... I forgot he was your uncle. That's in Tucson, Willie Coleman. When I was a 10th grader at Gadsden High School, I played on the basketball team. And Dwight and Tucson were seniors on the basketball team. So, they were teammates, I guess you could say. And so, those were... They were really fine guys back then. And they both have gone on to really make a mark for themselves. Dwight Cameron is a very noted cinema photographer. Worked at the Alabama Public Television, I believe, and University of Alabama. For years, he had the pleasure of having a camera at Alabama basketball games. It would be under one of the baskets. And that was one of the fun things that he got to do. But he is extremely talented, as is Tucson. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to Google T-O-S-O-N, Tucson. But he is an unbelievable artist. He has a real gift, and has just done some amazing pieces of work. So, I'm looking very forward to the documentary. Haven't seen Dwight in quite some time. I look forward to seeing him when he returns home to... For that unveiling. And last but not least, Grow Gadsden is tonight, 5:00 at the venue. Mayor Ford, you'll be leading that discussion and charge tonight. I hope the place is packed out. It's a lot of work has gone on this, what, 14, 15 months? I think I heard over 2,000 citizen inputs are part of this document that's going to be presented tonight, this plan of moving our city forward. We've seen brief snippets of it. It's real exciting. It's very bold, and I think that's... I think we've seen that come from our administration. And I think it's time to be bold. And I think it's exciting that we have this vision that's going to be publicly announced tonight. So, I encourage everybody to be at the venue, 5:00, to see and hear about the vision for your city, city of Gadsden. And with that, we will be adjourned. Thank you. Have a good day.